Good morning. Call feed door, please join me to hold your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, in the Father, who has created us all.
Thank you and good morning. Uh, do you roll call vote?
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Merryle.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Depot.
Here.
Mr. Farabee.
Here.
Mr. Monty.
Here.
Mr. McNally.
Here.
Mr. Skozavala.
Here.
Mr. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Pleady.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Marnell.
Here.
Mr. Woodson.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mr. Tyler.
Here.
Mr. Golland.
Here.
And Mr. Preston.
Here.
Thank you.
We have no guests, so we can move on to resolutions.
Resolution number one seventeen, accepting and approving the recommendation of the Southern Essex Lake Champlain Micro Enterprise Grant Review Committee to award the sum of $45,000 to Starway Services LLC of Mariah, New York pursuant to the New York State CDBG contract number three eight two CRF dash ME eight zero one dash one four and further authorizing it the Essex County Industrial Development Agency, Essex County Chairman or County Manager to prepare and execute any and all agreements and sub- recipient agreements necessary in incident to this award.
Move by. Move by Mr. To Miga. Second. Second by Mr. Gardner. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number eighteen, authorizing the Community Resources Department to apply for and accept a smart growth grant for the fish hatchery in an amount up to $75,000, authorizing the Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Harrington. Now, second. Second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution twenty-four, authorizing the purchasing agent to contract with Schroeder Rivers Associates for engineering services for the culvert replacement project on the Hazelton Road Bridge in the town of Wilmington in the amount of $24,900 from budgeted funds and authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Preston. Second. Second by Mr. Depot. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution twenty, in support of Governor Cuomo increasing the budget and environmental protection fund to $300 million.
Move by Mr. Moore, Mr. Marnell. Second. Mr. Tyler. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, aye. Aye, close. Carry, thank you.
Resolution twenty-one, authorizing the execution of a shared services agreement with New York State Department of Transportation and Essex County Department of Public Works for emergency assistance with respect to sharing services, equipment and materials in the event of a declared or undeclared emergency.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Miga. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution twenty-two, authorizing the issuance of a permit to Ironman Lake Placid for the use of county roadways for the 2016 Ironman Triathlon race.
Move by Mr. Pleady. Now, second. Mr. Giadorno, gee, Giadorno. I'll get it. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. Aye, close. Carry.
Resolution twenty-three, authorizing payment to Development Authority of the North Country for the repair of the overhead door and fiber optic cable at DPW Highway Garage in the amount of $7,295.
Move by Mr. Moore. Second. Second, Mr. Merryle. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution twenty-four, authorizing the purchasing agent to contract with Schroeder Rivers Associates for engineering services for the culvert replacement project on the Hazelton Road Bridge in the town of Wilmington in the amount of $24,900 from budgeted funds and authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Preston. Second. Second by Mr. Depot. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number twenty-five, authorizing a contract amendment with Schroeder Rivers Associates for engineering services, including schematic design and final design as it relates to bridge replacement project on County Route 34, Trout Brook Road over Trout Brook in the town of Minerva in the estimated amount of $31,300 from budgeted funds and authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. McNally, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution twenty-two, authorizing the issuance of a permit to Ironman Lake Placid for the use of county roadways for the 2016 Ironman Triathlon race.
Move by Mr. Pleady. Now, second. Mr. Giadorno, gee, Giadorno. I'll get it. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. Aye, close. Carry.
Resolution twenty-three, authorizing payment to Development Authority of the North Country for the repair of the overhead door and fiber optic cable at DPW Highway Garage in the amount of $7,295.
Move by Mr. Moore. Second. Second, Mr. Merryle. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution twenty-four, authorizing the purchasing agent to contract with Schroeder Rivers Associates for engineering services for the culvert replacement project on the Hazelton Road Bridge in the town of Wilmington in the amount of $24,900 from budgeted funds and authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Preston. Second. Second by Mr. Depot. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number twenty-eight, calling on the state of New York to reston- refund, restore funding purity between the capital plans on the Metropolitan Transportation Authority and the New York State Department of Transportation.
Move by Mr. Marnell. Second. Second. Thank you.
Resolution twenty-nine, authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to RFP for the services of the removal of hazardous material and fishing.
Move by Mr. Harrington. Mr. Second by Mr. Moore. Mr. Preston. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number thirty, authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to bid for utility train vehicle for the soil and water conservation department.
Move by Mr. Moore. Second by Mr. Marnell, Mr. Woodson. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, resolution number thirty, authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to bid for a utility train vehicle for the soil and water conservation department.
Move by Mr. Moore. Second by Mr. Marnell, Mr. Woodson. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, who was the first one that seconded it?
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore. And then, Mr. Woodson was second?
Marnell and Woodson.
Marnell, okay, thank you. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution thirty-one, authorizing to amend resolution number three seventy-six of December twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, contracts for insurance coverage in 2016 to include the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles fees.
Move by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Gardner. Comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merryle.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Monty.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution thirty-two, authorizing the institution of a new policy to issue all employee reimbursement payments be made by direct deposit.
Move by Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Merryle. Comments or questions? Mr. Skozavala.
What exactly is this? So if we get a mileage check, it has to go directly into our checking account?
That would be the intep, yep. We get, we get a lot of people that, we give them the check and they lose it, and then we gotta recut another check, um, and then we gotta stop payment on the check, and we gotta cut another check, and we gotta go through all of that. So Mike's suggestion was if everybody just got direct, um, ream- got direct deposit reimbursement, then we wouldn't run into those issues.
What if you don't have a checking account? You don't get a check.
Again, I guess, I guess there could be some exceptions if somebody actually didn't have a checking account. I don't know.
Hey, Mike, that's a good question. I'm just playing bad cop. I don't see how you can force someone to deposit a check into a checking account. I just don't find that, I don't see how you can do that.
You probably can't.
Okay. I carry you.
Just curious if the union had given feedback on this.
Yeah.
They were supportive of it. No, I, they haven't even said anything to us at this point.
Does that happen if we do authorize this? Then they get feedback, or do we just?
Well, they may. I mean, if they do, you know, we, we on occasions pass policies and, you know, which we, we feel are within management's rights to do so, and if the union raises the issue, then we'll address the issue at that time.
Okay. Mr. Golland.
The federal government requires that if you're federal government, you gotta have
gotta have direct deposit.
Well, not the federal government.
I know, but, I mean, this, this, the precedent is there, so, you know, it didn't, I mean, every level has learned that it's too expensive to keep cutting checks.
Mr. Giardano?
How much is actually lost at peace?
I don't think it was a huge amount. Mike would have that number specifically, I don't. I know him and I talked about it the last time and, you know, he said you, you know, clearly we would like to get to the point where everything is direct deposit. It's just so much less trouble. Cutting checks is a pain, it's expensive. I mean, we, we currently, even for direct deposits, we cut a check now, which gives you a receipt. We are upgrading the penimation software, which will provide that if somebody wants a copy of their receipt, they can go online and get it off of the software itself. So, so we're kind of pointing towards that direction. We would like to get to that point where we don't have to physically cut checks all the time. Costs printers, it costs paper, it costs everything that goes with it. And ultimately, one of the issues that we ran into is that banks used to provide us with checks and they didn't charge us, but they now do. They, you know, we no longer are able to get checks for free, we no longer get those services anymore. So Mike is just looking for ways to hold costs down without going into. Mr. Moore? I don't have a problem with it. My county check goes direct deposit and, but the thing is, the controllers has, state controllers has direct deposited three checks to our account, the wrong account. Yeah. And I've had to go change them. So as long as my check comes into my account and not Tommy's, I'm all set. I didn't catch any of that, but the policy should read that if you don't, if you lose your check or you don't cash it, then the fee will be deducted against your next check. I mean, there's gotta be some responsibility and ownership on some of this stuff. Yeah.
Any further comments or questions concerning this resolution? If not, roll call both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
I don't know.
That's a different vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
I'm not sure.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 33, authorizing the payment of $5,500 to Fiscal Advisors and Marketing Incorporated for the preparation of the $4.345 million bond anticipation note renewal for one year and further authorizing a payment of $1,608.8 to Premier Printing Incorporated for preparing and printing the official statements, sale notices, and final statements for the bond anticipation note from budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Skozava, second by Mr. Maryhill. Comments or questions?
Just, just a comment. We talked about this a little bit in the legislative committee. If these bonds were not tax exempt, I guarantee you, you would not see a rate of .97%. That's really, you know, it's, that's pretty cheap. And if those, if they for some reason changed that to where those municipal bonds became taxable, that rate would not be as low.
Any further comments or questions? That, roll call both.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 34, authorizing budget amendments for various departments.
Moved by Mr. Skozava, second by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, roll call both.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 35, authorizing the purchasing agent to procure, procure an award, the purchasing, the purchase of a paper cutter in the central printing department in an amount not to exceed $13,000 with funds to come from the contingency account.
Moved by Mr. Skozava, second by Mr. Preston. Comments or questions?
One of the questions that was asked of me at the committee meeting was what the balance was, what the, what we started out with in contingent, as you can see here, it's $200,000. That's what we budgeted yearly for contingent.
Any further comments or questions? That, roll call both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 36, of condolence to the family of Edward Hoskins.
Moved by Mr. Gardner.
Second.
Thank you.
Resolution 37, of condolence to the family of Wade Palmer.
Moved by Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Resolutions from the floor. Resolution accepting and adopting and placing on file policies, plans, procedures, annual reports.
Do I have 12 of them on the floor?
Um, I, yeah, I think so. Where are they at? Yes, you do.
Moved by Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, roll call both.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Yeah.
Okay. The second one from the floor is authorizing the purchasing agent to bid or request proposals and award a contract for asphalt paver for the Department of Public Works from budgeted funds and authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Do I have 12 of them on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Moore and Mr. Monty. Comments or questions?
Yeah, just to give you a little information on this, I talked to Chris and Jim about this in depth and they went out and checked leasing the paver just, you know, to make sure. And to, the minimum for leasing a paver for our paving year is anywhere from $90,000 to $120,000 a year. The paver that we're replacing or DPW is replacing is 22 years old, so we get our use out of them. The paver that's gonna be the backup paver, paver is seven years old. And I'm glad this says to authorize the purchase of it too, because time is of the essence, you know, to get one in. So to award the purchase is good too, so, uh, they're checking state contract to cite just RFP, so we will get the best bang for our buck, I hope.
Any further comments or questions?
Just, just as how this is, what? Yeah, really, it's not today. The board originally authorized us to remove about a million dollars worth of equipment from the 2016 budget. This was within that million dollars. But what the board directed was that we would put together a group, or a, a bond anticipation note project for 2016 and this will be part of that. But because of the timing, we needed to get this out early on the street in order to get pricing so that we would be able to have something purchased by the time you actually have to put blacktop on the road. So that's why it's a little step ahead of the bond resolution request, which will probably come at next meeting, but this one, we needed to get on the street right away in order to get a price. And just to follow up on that discussion that we had at budget time, we're actually paying another bond op this year, correct? And so that's, that's what led to that. Right. The previous banned equipment, the equipment ban that we had ended as of 2015, so we will start a new one and essentially it'll start in 2017 because you will end the 16 year and pay, pay the first payment in 17.
Any further comments or questions? Is that roll call both?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Department of Public Works to increase revenues and appropriations in the amount of $33,000 from Cornell Cooperative Extension Funds for the completion of the restroom at the Cornell Cooperative Extension Building.
Moved by Mr. Moore? Oh, sorry, 12 11 on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Maryhill. Mr. Giardano. We'll get to it, buddy. Comments or questions?
As it says, this is just, just money coming in from cooperative extension that they've collected from grants and stuff.
Further comments or questions? Can't hear you. Further comments or questions on the resolution? Mr. Harrington?
I'm wondering why that would cost $33,000. Jacuzzi.
Anyone like to comment on it?
Yeah, a lot of it's driven by the handicap access issues, but I, I'm not sure that it's gonna cost $33,000. Essentially though, the Cornell Cooperative Extension raised this funds on their own and the money is coming directly from Cornell into the county DPW budget so that we'll have it as we need it when we go out to bid on these projects, on this particular project. It may not be $33,000, but that's the amount that Cornell had available. What, what drives this, and this isn't a good example, a good example is even though it's just a bathroom, you're paying prevailing wages on everything. So you could, you're not gonna get a whole lot of work done today for $30,000. And that's one of the unfortunate things that we're faced with, is that you have to pay those outrageous, outrageous wages, outrageous wages. Jerk. And, and Tom's right, and there's also location, 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 and handicap accessibility too.
Any further comment or question? That, roll call both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution amending resolution number 373 of December 28, 2015 to correct salaries of management confidential and certain department employees.
Call go out on the floor?
Um, do I? Yes, I do. You do.
Moved by, moved it. Moved by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions?
If you, if you look at this document, if you flip the pages, there are certain ones that have an arrow in a, in a highlighted and bold. They were not, they were missed in the original resolution and that's why they're being, that's why we're asking you to amend and include these ones in that resolution. Doesn't change it, we didn't change it by salary, we didn't do anything different than what was budgeted for. It was just that resolution when it went through did not include those particular ones that are highlighted and with an arrow and bold and put in bold. My, um, there's a number of them there, you can see them.
Any further comments or questions? Roll call both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution accepting and adopting and placing on file policies, plans, procedures, annual reports.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second.
No, 12.
Oh, sorry, 12 11 on the floor? That's what it's saying.
Yes, you do.
Second. Moved by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Skozava. Comments or questions?
No, this was for the county clerk's, um, accounting monies received and dispersed in 2015. We haven't done this one yet.
Any comments or questions?
Come on, we'll talk about it.
Roll call both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pledy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. You meant like previously, like in the year. Oh, I didn't realize.
Any further resolutions from the floor?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have two.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't, much.
The, the previous resolution that we just passed, we'd already passed as the first resolution from the floor, so disregard the last resolution. Effectively, it's, uh, it's null and void.
Yes, I have two. Both of these gentlemen had family members that worked for the Essex County. The first, I'd like to offer a resolution of condolences to the family of Richard Gilbo.
Do I have 12 11 on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Second. Second is a resolution of condolence to the family of Robert Red Allen.
Do I have 12 of them on the floor?
Yes, you do.
And then the second?
Thank you.
Further resolutions from the floor? If not, just a couple of things that I gathered from the recent NICEC conference. Linda Beer's great presentation concerning the increased use and addiction to heroin. She was one of four panelists and the other three were doctors. And she did a great job just addressing the issue in Essex County. I'm gonna ask Linda at her next committee meeting to possibly bring that presentation to find it very interesting, you know, at the level of the use in Essex County. She did a great job. Again, the second workshop that I attended was on drones with the increasing use of hobbyists with drones, some great information on the flight zone. We're all, or at least I was under the impression that at the time I went into the workshop that if drones were to be flown within five mile radius of a airport, they had to get clearance from the airport. That's correct on the, with the exception of if you have an unmanned or a non-towered operated airport, that restriction falls to three miles. So I urge you that if you have an airport or a runway or anything in your town, that you, you know, contact your local airport, they'll instruct you on what needs to be done. These folks are required to call that airport for approval to fly in the zone. It doesn't seem like a big deal, they just wanna know where the planes are. There is a registration on these aircraft. Anything over half a pound has to be registered with the FAA. And again, that's an easy, I wanna lie myself to look at it, it's a $5 fee. But these folks, you know, my town hall's gotten quite a few calls, I don't know about the rest of you, but, you know, I would direct them to call their closest airport to wherever they're asking. So some good information on that one. We also, Mr. Preston attended some great workshops. We all tried to split them up so that we all gathered a little knowledge from all of them. So, Mr. balloon. So with that, that's all I have to say. Fish hatch meeting in the back room, a meeting following this meeting. We have no further business to come before this committee. We're adjourned. Thank you.